I am gonna call the Woodbury Select Board Meeting Order Tuesday, May 27th. And any adjustments to the Select Board Agenda? I just have, maybe we can even do it during public comment. Just sort of John speak about the buyout stuff.
He's on there, he's on there.
Not on this one.
Not on this one?
It was on the one online though.
This is probably the draft one.
Oh, okay, so yeah, it's on this one.
Okay, great. So we don't need to do that, but we can bump.
6:30.
6:30. If you wanted, there's no public comments, so if we wanted to have you do it.
Well, I just commented that if this is public comment time, that actually I needed to talk about EMD stuff, not buyout stuff.
Okay.
That was not sufficiently specific.
Okay.
So we can do it now or later, whatever's the pleasure.
Let's just go through the rest of the beginning part of the agenda, then we can get back to you.
Sounds good.
Is there a motion regarding the minutes from May 12th?
I'll make a motion, I wasn't here, but I'll make a motion.
No, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
You can't sign them either.
I can't? Okay.
We can abstain from the vote.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion that we, from the minutes from the May 12th meeting.
Carter, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor approving the minutes from May 12th? Please say aye.
Aye.
Please say aye.
Aye.
That's from us.
And Liz, you're gonna abstain because you weren't here?
Sure.
All right. I'll sign those. And John, if it's all right, maybe, Robin, you probably wanna just do the clerk's report and then head home, right?
No, it's fine, you can go.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Okay. Do, if you don't, we don't have any other public comments, so if you want, bump you up, so you can.
Sure.
For Robin.
Get out of your evening.
Thank you.
So I will comment, I will say about the buyout stuff, I've been out for a couple of weeks, basically, but we have a meeting scheduled for Thursday with the people from the state. So we sent them off the title search stuff and the, the, the grant.
Yes, see, I'm that guy.
Yes, that, and so we'll have got a meeting for next steps on Thursday. My, my understanding is that we'll have to talk about how to spin up the appraisals and whatnot, get the process actually moving, so that's that.
Are you gonna have to pay for appraisals too?
I don't know, my understanding is that the appraisals is part of the process that's under the project. And so the project would pay for the appraisals. So my understanding is like, this is kinda like the beginning of the RONDA project. It was just because of the question about the ownership that kicked off the whole title search stuff, because the map showed it with two things, so. But my understanding is like, the appraisal is kinda like the first official thing that you do, that you spend money on, spend the grant money on. So that's, like I said, that's my understanding, but hopefully I'm more in on Thursday.
And the grant money is a set amount by now, or will the appraisals make a difference?
No, it's not exactly, it's not a set amount.
Okay, good.
And there's a budgeted amount, a rough budgeted amount for the project, but the, the various things that determine the total amount are determined along the way, which we would actually look at pretty well back as.
Yeah.
But, so, anyway. Basically, we have to coordinate with them, have to line it up, and then they trickle the money down as we do things, so that the project pays for them, for the activities, and one step at a time. So, anyway, Thursday, I've got that meeting, and hopefully we'll have more information as to the specifics, the next actual step from that. So, that is that. The other thing is update the L M, L E M P, Local Emergency Management Plan, which is, you know, I gave you updates of the versions of it.
Thank you.
And this is what it's updated to, it's next to just a big list of contact information. So technically, it has to be adopted every year by the town, and then I've gotta send it on into the state.
So, do we have to have this on the agenda, have to vote on it, or?
It has to be adopted at a, it has to be adopted at a warned meeting.
No, I guess we'll have to put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
But it didn't say that it has to be warned.
What?
It has to be adopted at a warned meeting.
Yeah.
But it didn't specifically say that it has to be warned.
Oh geez.
Hey, you know, they're gonna.
Yeah, the meeting's warned, what the heck, yeah.
The meeting's warned.
Is there a deadline that you?
June 1st.
June 1st.
Sorry, it wasn't on there.
Okay.
So if we don't approve it today, then you'll be late for the deadline, right?
Fill out my peg.
Oh no!
Should we just look at it and think about approving it today? What do you guys think?
Well, I looked at it when we updated it a couple of weeks ago.
Uh huh, I did too.
Yeah, I've only made a few little changes, I add the EMDs from surrounding towns, some surrounding towns.
Is there a signature line on here?
There is a signature line on the adoption, on the front page. Or you can throw in minutes, and then I can send Chris to Electronic Company, he can type it.
Okay.
So I guess, I guess it's, the warning of the, I guess it's a municipality, I don't know how, how we get around it, but the idea would be that I think people could come to comment on it. If we didn't want to, unfortunately, we would have to like, meet again, or two of us would have to meet again. We'd have to warn this, like, very quickly.
I'm sorry.
Or you just wait till next time, and they can say whatever they wanna say to me, and I'll shrug.
Well, like you said, this is a warned meeting.
It is a warned meeting, it wasn't on the, I mean, it was on the, on the warning.
I get it, like if somebody did have.
If they wanted to.
Strong feelings about it, and wanted to, and they didn't get a fair chance, I guess.
Yeah. I, I assume I'm the one that's gonna have to sign to say that it was adopted at a warned vote meeting.
Should we wait?
I, I mean, again, I'm happy if we have an emergency meeting, and really, it only has to last for a few minutes.
But then somebody has to go through the warning, and the posting, and the agenda, and the minutes, and all that.
Yep.
So you gotta do it next time. Just put on the agenda, do it next time, and then they come back and me, and they say, this is due, and I shrug, and I say, I'll get it when it's done.
But does that jeopardize the project?
It's, uh.
So our next meeting won't be until July 9th?
Right, right.
Yeah, separate things.
Yeah.
The project is a separate.
Okay, so then this doesn't, then I, if you, if you're okay with that?
Like I said, I honestly don't know what the, what their process and ramifications are, so. But I would just, you know, like I said, it doesn't say that it has to be on the agenda.
Yeah.
I talked to too many lawyers in my day job.
And they all know how to get around.
Yes, you're right, it's at a warned public meeting, so we are adopting it. I mean, the letter, I guess, uncomfortable doing that, especially if that, if we've all read it and approved it.
I feel good about it.
And this can be amended, right? Yeah, so if somebody came in, they really were upset about it, we could amend this.
You can amend it any time.
At any time, so, yes, I've been convinced.
I guess I would make a motion that we adopt this local emergency management plan for whatever the current year is.
2025.
If we, or for, for calendar year 2025, okay.
And so John, the only changes you made were just, can you remind me?
There's a number of minor changes, because they went and did it, they came out with a different form, which had 95-plus percent of the old form.
Is Depple Rose still the emergency management, or the emergency services contact person?
She's, she's the one that the R E M C has on their list for us, so I'm going with that.
Okay, so there's another, I mean, they got another president now, I don't think she's president anymore, but she's still.
No, Depple's not.
Huh?
Depple's not president.
No, but she still could be the contact person.
Yes, on the R E M C, on their paperwork, she's the, yeah, the emergency services representative to that meeting. And it covers us and them. So that's one of the new things they added, they, like I said, 90% of it's the same, other than this form is sloppier. And it had a few extra fields that I had to put random stuff in. Not random stuff, technically, but like, they asked for a public contact information point, for instance, and then if you didn't have one, you just put your EMDs, contact information, you know, stuff like that.
Yeah.
I, I did not find any substantive changes.
Okay.
Which municipal position can activate the E O C? Is the E O C gonna move into the new fire station?
I think that is the new fire station. That's, I updated the address to.
Oh, okay.
The old one is, it has an wrong number.
Oh.
Maybe I should know the sound, what does the acronym P S A P stand for?
Public Service Answering Point?
Yeah, something like that.
Something like that.
Well, they, they love their acronyms even more than.
Okay, so there's a motion on the table that we approve this L E M P as.
We adopt it, adopt.
Yep, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting the Local Emergency Management Plan as written, please say aye.
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 Aye. Thanks, John. So then this is, I signed down here on the front page, yep.
If it's okay, I'll email you a version, and then you can also instantly have it formatted, and I'll put the language on there, and as, as adopted, and yada, yada, Select Board, and then I'll send them the electronic version, rather than scanning in your signbook.
Sure.
You go ahead and sign it that way. That would be good, too. Belt and Suspender says the legislative leaders are so far from saying.
Thank you.
And I will let you guys know if I hear anything useful or interesting on Thursday.
Yeah, that'd be great. Probably then might be on the agenda for the next meeting.
Maybe, I'll see what comes out of it, if there's anything we actually need to do. So, see how it goes.
For which?
For the buyout stuff, whatever the next steps are on the buyout stuff. But I'll, after Thursday, I'll, I'll let you guys know what the discussion, whatever was talked about.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Very good.
Thank you, guys. Have a good evening.
You can leave that term, okay, yeah. We might have visitors, you never know.
Yeah, crowd.
Robin, nice to see you.
Brandy and I cleaned up the further room downstairs the other day, and we found a dehumidifier down there.
Yeah.
We plugged it in.
Yeah.
It ran over the weekend on 40%, and the little water catch basin thing was full when I came in yesterday.
Yeah.
We saw that one that was over in the corner when we were down there a few hours ago, yeah.
Seems like a good idea to run that, run that thing.
But it's gonna involve somebody, I mean, there's no place down there to dump it, there's no sink.
There's the drain hole, right?
Yes.
Well, yesterday I brought it up when I dumped it in the bathroom.
Yeah.
Is there, is there some hole, or some pump in the basement?
No.
There isn't.
No, I'm after Ashton, he's supposed to put one in there.
He is?
Yes, he is.
That's part of a contract, we have, have that done? Okay.
Yes.
All right. Cause once that's done, then I think we could, we could just direct a hose right into the sump hole.
So he's gonna put a sump pump? Oh, really?
Yeah.
In that hole?
No, over by the bulkhead.
Oh, okay. For?
For the runoff water that comes in off the bank. And then if we keep running this dehumidifier, we can put that right over there.
Yeah. And does it, some, some dehumidifiers have a setting that tells you like, what their relative humidity is? Did it have, you can set them to like 40%.
And this one's set on 40%.
Yeah, but some of them, when you immediately turn them on, they'll say like, it's 60% right now.
Oh, I did not notice it when we turned it on.
Okay. Just be curious, I can go look, let me have her.
Is this something we've already paid for, the sump pump?
Yeah, back when it flooded.
Okay.
Oh, you already bought the sump pump?
Yeah, back when it flooded, that's how we pumped the cellar out. Remember, I had to go to F W Web and pick it up before I could go to my sister-in-law's funeral service?
Yeah, I didn't remember that, well, that was the week where we couldn't get.
Nowhere.
Yeah, we couldn't even get, by the time, by the time we could get to the F W Web, our cellar had already drained itself, because Ron was trying to buy a sump pump too.
Too bad I didn't want that day I was there, they had all kinds of them.
How'd you get there?
Round, around the back roads.
Oh, okay.
Now, did you guys get the R F P that Skip Lindsay did for the roof?
I didn't look at it yet, but I did get it.
Okay.
Do you wanna hard copy, cause I've got two of them here.
Love a hard copy.
It's like 80 pages.
Is this the one?
Yep, that's the one.
Okay.
Got a lot of stuff in there.
Do you wanna hard copy?
I would look at a hard copy, thanks. I can also share if you need it for.
And that's the memo that came, I just printed it off, cause I didn't know if you guys would have hard copies or not.
So much better.
I'm not making a hard copy.
I'll share with you, Diana.
That's okay.
Share it together.
And then from Treville Whipple, from V L T C, they have a free training for animal control officers for animal cruelty.
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 Thank you.
It's been a long day already, so I forwarded that to Ed.
Oh, good.
Cool.
Yep. You tell him we, oh, we pay him $500 anyways, right?
Yeah.
Haven't paid him yet.
Yeah.
Interesting.
And then this is the email back from Transportation with the adjustments we made to the mileage certificate.
Oh, okay, so that's just the final phase sign.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so you can put that right in with.
Right in my file?
Wherever.
Okay. Okay. And they were supposed to have the second phase of the new election system done over the weekend. But I wasn't here today, so I don't know if that happened or not, I'll look in the morning.
What is the second phase of that?
The second phase of it is, they were gonna shut down our old system and transfer everything over to the new system, all of the voter registrations that were in the old system.
Yeah.
They were supposed to be transferring that over, over the weekend.
Yeah.
And then, my final one is, I went back to Express Care. Here I have it. They here set me up with occupational therapy, which I go there tomorrow at 11 o'clock. They're concerned that I have a bunch here, and a bunch there.
This is from the town reports falling on you?
Yes.
Oh my gosh.
And that's why I'm now in this brace, so I can't move my thumb.
Oh my. Workday limited to four hours, well that works.
That's what I told her, she goes, well, I can reduce it down more if you want.
Cannot work more than eight hours a day, yeah, wow. Continue to elevate and approximate ice, wow.
And no more than 45 minutes of re.
Repetitive.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Is this gonna make any significant changes to what you do on a daily basis, or is it kinda?
Well, I will only be able to type on the computer for 45 minutes, and I'll have to go do something else.
Yeah, yeah.
Trying to do my recording and whatnot.
Yeah. Do you think, can you get it done in that time, or is that gonna make it so you can't finish your normal work?
I should, I'll find out more tomorrow.
Yeah.
You kinda go back and forth anyway, don't you?
Yes.
It's not like you're sitting on 45 minutes.
And this one here, I'll put in my personnel file.
How do you type right now, with that, do you have to take it off, or can you type with it?
This one, I can do this one, this one I have to do this way.
Oh.
And I think that's about it for me.
For your report, you mean?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So is this new election system gonna make any difference? I mean, are we gonna have to bring our passports to show our identification or anything?
They haven't said that yet. No, haven't said it yet.
I'll probably have to come out of Washington if they.
But one thing that will happen is if we have somebody that has a name of, well, the one we have in town, I'll use, Ann Peltz is going by Anna Peltz. She is not registered as Anna Peltz, she cannot vote as Anna Peltz, she has to vote as Ann Peltz. And if she wants to vote as Anna Peltz, she then has to reregister.
Reregister to vote?
Yes.
Gotcha.
Which is really not a big deal, right?
That's if she will reregister.
Yeah. I mean, she doesn't have to do like a formal name change or anything, if that is in fact her actual name.
That's what I've gotta find out from Secretary of State's office, how we do, how back this up.
We do have people who change their names more than once.
And they, but they have to reregister.
Yeah, well.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Lily.
Awesome. Yeah, to start off, our income over the past two weeks, tax receipts total, has been $17,247.82. Majority of this is from delinquent tax collection, at $16,033.72. And then the remaining fleet copy record zoning doc license. Our expenses, for payroll, $9,645.1. And for accounts payable, $32,035.98. And then we have one transfer of $20,000 from the M M A to the checking account.
I need your password.
Oh, yep.
Do you have your phone with you?
Yep.
Maybe use your phone too.
Okay, that has a password too.
Yeah, well, if you can write both of them down there. Dana, it was not successful for yours, I have the Cold RV Technologies.
What?
Cause you don't have a cellphone. And they told me they.
I think I do, my cellphone's in the car, but it's not this kind of a cellphone, it's just a track phone, it's.
Does it have a screen on it?
Yeah.
That'll probably work.
You want it, okay.
Is it for text authorization?
Yeah.
Yeah, you could also do calls too, I'm pretty sure.
Well, let me call.
Really?
It just says I can either, it says I have to load an authenticator app, which I did, but it didn't find it, and typically it goes, wants to use your phone. So we'll try Lizzie's first, and see what happens.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Some other updates, we've been talking about the FEMA mitigation funds being put into a C D. Thanks to Robin, I looked much deeper into it. It looks like some regulations have changed within the past couple of months. Couple of months, let's see, back in January, one of the regulations was amended, and anything over $500, that's, any interest made on federal funds over $500 has to be sent back. So with the large amount FEMA funds that we have already, just even sitting in the M M A, I'm assuming we'll most likely have to send some funds back.
You think it's worth it to bother with?
No.
No?
No, it'll no longer be going into a C D.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't think it's necessarily worth opening up a different banking account, or keeping that money somewhere else. You know, the majority, you know, looking, looking back at our financial history, interest hasn't really gone over $500, but just since we received so much this year.
Doesn't like 2626.
Maybe there's a number 26. Try that one.
You know, it'll be, I think it's an A C H payment, that essentially we would have to set up to send back that interest, once we do the interest allocation. Moving down, both Brandy, and I've talked to John about it, it does look like that we will go into some type of deficit over the next couple of months. We have that loan option available, just letting you guys know, I'm diving into that. And then hopefully we'll have a report to everyone next week, what we can do to minimize what we may have to borrow, what it'll look like, and what we might have to do in terms of the tax rates this year for it.
I mean, Brandy was always very good about not wanting to borrow, she didn't want, so make sure you know whatever tricks she has for.
Oh, yeah.
For doing that.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
This is, that's a pretty much standard thing for a lot of municipalities, right? They have to, until taxes come in?
Not that I, not that I'm certain about, but this is my first year, really deep into municipal government, so I think maybe Brandy, or, you know, Robin, if you have an opinion on it, or Diana.
If they don't have a, if they don't have a rollover at the end, you know, on July 1st, if there's no left over from the end of the year, then they would have to. But we've always had enough to keep going, until taxes came in, so.
Yeah, yeah.
But maybe worse.
So I, like I said, I'm exploring it over the next two weeks, and then we'll have a more concrete kind of view over the next couple of months, how it'll affect us, what we'll feel, and what the results will be from that. And then number three, you know, going through some, what's the word I'm looking for? Not regulations, statutes, reading into best practices. I think I will want to start a quarterly and yearly financial health report. I don't know if this is something that Brandy had done at the end of the year previously, but I will also be working on that, just kind of a broad overview that goes a little bit more in depth into where we are in our budget, each quarter and at the end of the year.
Would the auditor tell for that, or?
Yeah.
Do that yourself?
Yeah, John has offered his help with it. I'm sure Brandy, since she'll still be here for delinquent tax collection, will be here to, you know, help assist as well, and. I'm pretty scrappy, I couldn't find a lot of resources, so. That's it for treasurer's aspect. Do we want to talk about changes in policy or benefits for change in schedules on the report as well?
Well, we did confirm that, I don't think there's any need to change our policy, because our policy is pretty clear that full-time workers are considered workers over 30 hours, and they get benefits, health insurance, whatever else. But when it comes to paid time off, you have to have 40 hours, or else you get prorated.
Mm-hmm, yes.
So, the question that came up for me was, what do we do on a day like yesterday? Do we assume that they get paid 10 hours, or do they get paid 8 hours? Lizzie had an interesting take on that.
Right, so I would say, you know, the, most of the employees are 40-hour a week employees, they're not all, but. The 10-hour, four-day-a-week thing is something that, I'm under the understanding that they're choosing to do, it's like a benefit, that they get to do it, and they, they want to, I don't think they have to. So, it's not like we require them to work 10 hours a day, so I don't think, like holidays, I think it would make sense for them to get 8 hours. I feel like giving 10 for a holiday would be a little bit excessive. I feel like giving ten for a holiday would be a little bit excessive.
And if they end up with a thirty.
What? You've done that in the past.
Well, that's what, that's why I brought it up, cause I couldn't remember what was done in the past.
Okay, I didn't realize that.
But that doesn't mean.
I mean, it doesn't mean that's right, but.
But we have done it?
Yep.
Okay. Is that what we've normally done, like for a long time?
Yes.
You know, okay.
Since they've been doing their four-hour and, um,
Oh, okay.
Alfie comes to you guys and tells you when he's starting his four, ten-hour days. Instead of coming to you guys and asking, is it okay if we start on this date?
Oh, yeah, no, he just, that's, so we're here and we're starting.
Can I ask a clarifying question? So in the wintertime, they're doing five, eight-hour days, right?
No.
They're still four, ten?
They do four nine-hour days and then three or four hours on Fridays.
You're right. Okay, I forgot about that.
Four, yeah, four hours on Friday.
So what have we been doing in the winter? Have we been giving them nine and a half hours for a holiday or?
I think it evens out to nine hours.
Or not, okay. That's just confusing if like we're giving them different amounts, summer versus winter.
I feel like it should be eight, uh, even if it hasn't been in the past, but that's, I'm up for discussion about it.
Is that something that needs to be in policy? You know, it would seem to me that like if, that's what we were gonna suggest. Like going forward, that's how we avoid like this kind of, uh, situation in the future. That it's pretty clear and, you know, an amendment to the policy that we have.
I'm surprised it's not in there. I wish I had it. I don't have it.
Got you.
Yeah, thank you.
No, it's not in there.
It's not, okay. Would it, I wonder how you worded it?
Well, maybe that would be a good, and maybe we can table this discussion to work, to, you know, that would give you a chance, Liz and me, however, during this work period of time to like.
Look into it.
Dig into that.
Yeah.
Possibly we could propose, um, changes.
Yeah, I like that.
Maybe until we do that, I would be inclined to stick with what we've been doing until we make changes.
Okay. Lily, thank you. I'm gonna set this here to look at during our work.
That would be mine.
Yeah, do we need, you kind of need to know, right? Like right off about for doing payroll, I assume?
I, I mean, this week, um, we did have a holiday yesterday. Um, so it would be nice to know, um, by next payroll, um, so by next Monday, I think would be best to know. Um, a decision on, there was one other thing that I wanted to talk about, um, with the health insurance cost split. If it's going to be the same for forty-hour employees versus, um, employees that are still considered full-time, um, but aren't necessarily doing the hours. So we have an eighty-five percent, and eighty-five and fifteen percent split for health insurance. So just wanted to double check that that's, we want to keep it that way regardless of threshold, essentially.
Yeah, we mean, the policy is clear that someone working thirty hours gets the health benefits, so.
Great.
We don't split that up, right, for anybody else. The rest of them, the eighty-five, fifteen, is that the split?
Yes. I mean, I, and not that I know, um.
What do you mean by that? Do you mean like the town pays eighty-five percent and the employee pays fifteen percent?
Yes.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay. And currently that's same if you're full-time or I guess it's unclear if you're less than forty, okay.
Um, yes.
Okay.
I would say so. But health insurance is only something that is given to people who are full-time, so.
Gotcha.
What we, me and Robin do in terms of our benefits is going to be different.
Gotcha, okay.
So as long as somebody's thirty hours, just to be clear, thirty hours or more, it's an eighty-five, fifteen split?
Yes, yep, yep, yep.
And then in terms of, cause I, I don't know, by the time payroll comes out, we won't have had a chance to, uh, make a decision or change policy if that's what we're gonna do regarding that other, um, what would the board like to do or how to.
But it would be good for the, the beginning of the next fiscal year.
Yeah, for sure. Well, like, I'm just, I guess my suggestion would be that we, for the moment, stick with what we've done until we have a change.
In your, your policy, on page three, holiday leave, full-time employee, employees shall be paid, leave on the following holidays based on the length of their regular worked day, which may vary seasonally.
Okay, that's, that's right there then. So yeah, I guess they got ten, okay.
Good job, Rob.
So that means they get the ten if they're working.
But I noticed that one of them only had nine hours left. I can't remember which employee it was. But he only had nine hours left of holiday pay.
What is that? Nine hours left of holiday?
Why would you have any left unless it was a, a what do you call it, a?
Because we haven't been paid for yesterday yet.
Yeah, we haven't been paid for yesterday.
But you don't get, you don't get the pay, you don't get all the holiday pay at the beginning of the year like you do with the vacation pay and the sick leave.
Yeah, you do.
Really?
Yeah, everything, everything is July first, bang up.
Really?
Even on the holidays?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't know that. I just figured those would be like.
Brandy was very good about keeping track.
Yeah.
Which was another babysitting stuff.
So funny.
Yeah.
Well, I guess it's right there, so that kind of, if there's no more question, right?
Unless we're gonna change it for, uh, for the next fiscal year, we can change the policy. It's probably not that hard to amend.
You said that's on page three, Rob?
No, page eight.
And then just one last thing, um, just solidify a, um, effective date. So just effective immediately for, for these decisions. Keeping it, yes, the same and prorating all the holiday and vacation and what have you, yeah.
I guess we're not really making a change, so I'm not sure.
Well, we, we, we're making the change of all the other P T O time being prorated.
Oh, yeah.
In the holiday.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Cool, 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 cool.
Um, that's all for me.
Now, the, what, what would become interesting is what if there's a holiday on a Friday and they're not scheduled to work? We don't have to go there.
Well, they get four hours then.
Now, if it's a summer Friday, they get.
Yeah, they'll only be in the winter, right?
Right. That could be Christmas, New Years.
Yeah.
Presidents, no, President's Day is always Monday. So it's Christmas, New Years you'd have to worry about.
Yeah.
Maybe all that also, yeah.
Well, isn't it in the poli, I'm pretty sure it's in the policy that you just take it the following Monday, right? Or vice versa?
That's only if you don't work that day.
Isn't that what we're discussing? Is that?
No, like the highway, they work four hours on Fridays.
Okay.
Oh, I get what you're saying.
I get what you're saying. So it would benefit them most of the time to have it as it's stated right now in the policy, but sometimes it could be not a benefit to them.
Right.
Which kind of evens out, I guess, like, I don't know.
Something, something I need to clean up.
Maybe, yeah, yeah.
There's definitely some, um, it looks like edits in the personal policy from twenty eighteen. Um, that could be cleaned up.
What?
Um, that's what this one did.
This is, the, the one from two thousand and eighteen isn't anymore.
Well, that one's supposed to be just highway too.
There was some confusion. So when we redid it like last year or whenever it was, ah, maybe it was just before you started?
Yeah, I, I, I.
Yeah, so it was, it was confusing because some of the stuff, or a lot of the stuff in there was not applicable to the office stuff. So we decided to make the new one that we come up with just for the highway department and then we were supposed to also make one for office stuff.
Right, which we just haven't done yet. So if there's stuff in the old policy that applies to office, I guess it still applies.
Okay.
But if you have suggestions for how to clean up that.
Okay.
Rerate the whole thing like we did with that one.
I mean, I definitely think that there, it looks like there's been just some edits over the years of what you guys have decided.
Uh-huh.
Um, so I think even just getting like, um, a clean copy essentially for us to, to look at and, and see where we wanna go from there.
Okay.
A clean copy of what?
Well, there's just, you know, this states that I'm eighteen hours, I'm hired, or I'm paid for twenty-two point five hours. So things like that, um, so like explicitly, my benefits only apply to eighteen hours. You know, just, you know, things to make it a little bit more accurate or.
Yeah, there shouldn't even be that in there anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have to get.
So that would be in the old policy, right? There's nothing about you in the new policy.
I don't think so. No, no.
There shouldn't be, cause I thought we tried to.
Cause it says right on there, on the front there, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but see there's some edits here and.
Yeah.
Some things even crossed out, so.
So for now, like as much as this is probably a super pain in the butt, but I think we'd have to refer to this one for any highway questions and then this one for any non-highway.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you want the salt still?
Can we? Yeah, thank you. I'll bring it back before the end. Thank you.
Thanks, Lily. So we did have this time that we were, uh, thinking that maybe we would be working with Skip to configure our laptops for emails, but he's kind of jumped it into it and is doing it in the other room. Which can take us right onto the Woodbury Select Board work. And, um, the one question that I had that I have to probably dig into tonight is, as the town health officer, help officer, there was a report of a dog bite. Um, so I need to try to get in touch with the individual who was bitten. And then I have to find out what my responsibilities as town health officer.
So was there a complaint? Did the person go to the hospital?
They did.
Yes.
So in that case, the hospital is compelled to fax a, a report.
And I have that report.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then you can call the person and, and find out whatever you need to find out and then sign the form and give it to Rob and she'll stick it in the file. If something needs to be done, then yeah, it gets more complicated.
Alright, so I should just, that, that report is something that was sent, is something that I need to sign or?
You don't need to send it back.
Don't need to send it back. It just needs to live here with a signature that we did everything that we were supposed to do.
Right.
In regards to that, maybe make.
Right, I think at the bottom of the form, there's something that says what you found out.
Okay.
Uh, and then you, anything that you plan to do about it. Is it something that, something has to be done about?
I didn't, it didn't look like that to me. It looked like.
It didn't look like that to me.
It was just a report, so, um, presumably they asked it.
No, you're talking about with the dogs you're talking about. Yeah, no, I would, I would say no.
Yeah.
Yeah. It didn't, didn't indicate that there was anything to, to be done. But I would look into that, um, again. And then this is kind of just a, a list of our ongoing things that anybody could get into during this time. Um, Liz, I know you were, uh, thinking about, or started some of the scope and estimating of the town office.
Yeah.
Here.
Yep. Keep going on that.
That can continue?
Yeah.
The, uh, so that would be the scope of work.
That, uh, R F P from Skip was like, wow. Give me a red pencil and, uh, maybe a Sharpie. There's so much stuff in there that doesn't have to be in there. It's crazy.
I felt like my, the R F P I wrote was similar to that and I think that that might have been one of the reasons that, I mean, that, that folks were not interested in taking that on.
So we have it here. We could go through it and maybe just kind of do some tweaking.
Yeah.
We get a little more friendly.
So, uh, that is on our.
I couldn't even read it. Oh, maybe when I get my laptop back.
That's on our list of stuff to do, so it's the R F P for the Woodbury Town Hall that Skip, so it's just, uh, started for us.
Squeaky wheel gets the oil.
Oh, really? Okay, you didn't even need my password or did you know it already?
Uh, I knew your password.
Okay.
Then, uh, and we can talk about it right now, but, uh, in terms of the policy for town official emails, whether that needs to be a policy that we draft, um, that, uh, indicates that if you are a town official and like which town officials need to have an official town email. I mean, I would say at a minimum, everyone sitting here at this table should have an official town email. But then the question is, as Skip, uh, do the folks for.
I thought, I personally. Yeah, yeah.
Maybe if they want one, but.
But why would they, I mean, they don't, hey, the only reason, well, I guess I don't know the reason for having these official emails except for like protection and saving, uh, documentation, protection from viruses or something, but.
I mean, I think the.
People who, um, yeah, like the library board, what do they, I mean, I don't know.
And I don't know why there would be, but like one reason is that if, if there's ever a reason for a subpoena and they wanted all of our emails, like, it's not just emails that are related to town business, but it is.
Everything.
Everything that you've ever sent.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, just in a world of privacy, we should.
Read the library. The reason they asked for them, is they wanna be able to do collaborative processing. They did a lot of that with Google Docs before.
Yeah.
So the only way they can do that now is with, uh, what's the word?
OneDrive, I think. I think it's the.
OneDrive and there's some other term.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's why they asked for them.
Elaborative processing, whoa.
Well, it's they, you know, somebody writes a document, they sticks it out there and they're all working with the same version of the document. So that's why they asked for them.
Yeah, okay. And they're all willing to switch to a new format?
They already did.
They already did?
Yeah.
So they're on it. They've got.
I, I, I haven't heard any bad news.
Yeah.
I was told it happened, so what's the new guy, David?
Barber?
Huh?
Is it Barber?
Barber, yes. He's got, pretty strong I T background. He's got experience with this, so. He said he would take, he's taking all responsibility for I T at the library.
Pretty nice, for you.
Yeah, a little bit extra off. That means he has to handle all the, uh, questions that come through. Which he said he's willing to do, so. Alright.
So now that I've got this, what have I got?
Nothing.
He wasn't able to do here.
I wasn't able to do it.
Oh, okay. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said, okay.
I needed your cellphone.
Oh, okay. Somebody go get it?
Yeah.
Everybody tries to send me a text message, I'll never get it. Cause I only, hang on, I mean, I don't get.
Just your verification code. So if you bring it in here and just turn it on and let him try to log you in, I think he'll fix it. So are we in our work mode?
I think we're in our work mode, so, um, and then I guess another, you weren't here for the conversation, I don't think about. The Walker property, but.
Not that, most recent.
Yeah, so essentially there was a question and I'm not sure what can be done, um, and I'm not even sure how we figured this out.
Okay.
But, um, the, it was brought up by some folks that came to, they, they came to the meeting for public comment that, um, when they did a little digging, that the permit that was issued, um, was not for two structures, but was for one.
Yeah.
Whole barn.
Okay.
Which is, you know.
Yeah.
So there's questions about whether that's, uh, I think what they're angling for is an avenue to start a cleanup of this situation.
Regardless of if it's a legal structure, like what are, what are we gonna do?
Where is the enforcement, yeah.
Right, exactly.
So, um, I guess for our own purposes, it would probably be get to know, and I'm not sure whether, um, probably Robin has the ability to pull that for us, that permit.
Yep, okay.
Original permit, maybe we just, so that we've all had eyes on it and we know what it says, yeah.
Okay.
Um, and then, then there is, um, policy work for, uh, town properties.
Policy work?
Uh, it's a part of the policy for.
Oh, okay, sure. Um, do you wanna throw some? Oh, okay, sure. Um, do you wanna throw some things at me to start?
I think, I think if we keep going with the scope of work, and maybe I have a question for you before you.
Okay.
Yeah, um, head out, but, um, if you wanted to keep going with scope of work, maybe we can kind of cross. Eventually we'll cross it off, it won't get done today.
Okay, I didn't bring my list from last time. I'll be starting a fresh one, but, yeah, okay.
Um.
I'll do that.
So Lily, originally, and I think that we created some, Liz, you have to help me remember here, but when we were budgeting, I feel like we created some funds for assistance to the board, um, in terms of like.
Oh, no, speaking of signs.
Having, I, I have to double check that we did that, but it's my memory that we did that, but that someone could outside of work hours, um, if you, if you were interested in, for some reason it sticks in my mind that you might have been helping us with stuff like drafting a policy for, um, for the.
Absolutely.
For the two thousand eighteen version of the, you know, our handbook, um, for drafting a policy for uh, parking on town properties.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you already approved it.
And nothing, just like a simple draft, just to dig into that.
Okay, sorry.
But probably before you do that, I need to check that we actually, um, feel like we have.
I think we did too.
Yeah, I'm almost positive that we did.
We definitely talked about it.
Yeah, and, um, and if that was something you were interested in, then that would be some extra time that would be of value to the board.
Yeah.
What did I miss?
So, uh, I, I have this memory of that when we were drafting our budget, we created, um, we, a calendar for it, had some funds set aside for support of the, of the select board, and in the.
Yes.
Idea that we would maybe get some help from someone like Lily.
You mean more than Michael?
Uh, for stuff like drafting, you know, helping us draft a policy, you know, for instance, we need to, we need to create a parking policy on town properties.
We don't need a policy, we just need a sign.
Well, so that's just one example, but, um, we need to have policy.
Policy means we're gonna enforce it.
Yeah, but a policy for emails, policy for, um, in, and then the update of the handbooks, um, that we have, um.
You have the handbook?
So it is in the budget.
Well, it's for two thousand eighteen, uh.
Are you seeing it?
We have one for the highway department, we don't have one for the office staff.
Oh, you mean the personnel policy, oh, okay.
Personal policy, yeah.
We just select for an assistant, it's like.
So, we don't, we don't want one for parking, that's fine.
That's pardon, that's Michael.
And I think we would enforce it by towing people.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right, so it is enforceable and probably if we're not gonna have a policy, we possibly can't tow people. So, yes. So those are the things I feel like I remember us thinking we would need some help for.
I also wanted while you're on here, as far as, um, I, I'm the clerk of the board, so if you want me to do anything like post the agendas and stuff, you can help, you can ask me.
Okay.
But if you ask Robin, and I wrote this up for you, there's the three places that are required. The town office bulletin board, the post office bulletin board, and the website, and I forgot about the website when we were talking last week, but I think what happens is if John Reed sees it goes up on something else, he'll fluck it and put it on the website. And, but the other thing that we do, just, you know, to be friendly, is Front Porch Forum and the Facebook, and you said you didn't know how to do the Facebook, but I could show you that sometime.
Okay.
Or else you can just ask me to do the posting.
Okay, either, yeah, either one, I, um.
So if you want, I just wrote those down.
Typically share the agenda with John and then he puts it on.
Oh, you did that, okay, so, okay.
Independently of, once we had a final draft, and then share the.
Oh, okay, that's a good.
Yeah.
So Chris, I thought I saw that line item for what you were talking about, um, but I don't actually think you did put it in cuz I don't see it. I thought I saw it, but I guess that was, um.
Would it be for this year or next year?
Oh, uh, I guess it would have been for next year.
Okay, we're not gonna see it on here.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, yeah, let me grab that.
Thanks, Lily.
Uh-huh.
Um, uh. Look at that. Dog bite report.
Okay.
Is there any chance that we, you could print that?
Did I send it to you in an email?
You did, but I didn't print it, and I don't know that I, my computer couldn't print to your computers, to your printers here.
My editor's treasurer, assistant treasurer, zoning, rental control.
Man, they're so funny, I was thinking maybe I should have put that in the report today.
TC, uh, select board, stipend mystery.
Um, wages, wages, wages.
SB assistant was in for three thousand dollars for next year.
Oh, okay, so that must be, that's a thousand dollars more, so it must be Michael plus extra help that we're thinking about, okay, cool. Yeah.
Oh, you've got your book right there.
Did you find it?
Um, it looks like it was an extra thousand dollars on the SB assistant from last year. So moved from two thousand for the budget to three thousand. Mm-hmm, yeah.
And you should feel no obligation to say yes to any of this.
Oh, I would love to though.
Okay.
Yeah, I would absolutely love to, um, get a little stir crazy. For posting?
What's that?
That assistant position, you won't have to post that?
It's already in the, it's already in the budget, but it was for Michael.
Right, and now you're taking it away from Michael and giving it to a new person, how come you don't have to post it?
No, I don't.
I, it's, I, I don't, it has Michael, I don't think that Michael.
The money is there, if we need to hire you to do something, we'll just pay you.
Yeah. Um.
Whether or not it's in the budget, I don't think.
But I don't think.
You probably wanna be paid the same as you're paid for treasurers, right?
Very nice, um, but I don't think it's, it's, we're not taking it from Michael, correct?
We'll still pay Michael whatever he charges.
Okay.
But because those budgets are our budgets, and, you know, like last year, he didn't use the whole thing. And now that we're only using it once a month instead of twice a month, maybe it won't be, you know, but, I mean, that's for this year, I mean, for now, it might change.
Michael doesn't wanna do that.
He doesn't wanna do more.
He doesn't wanna do more, he doesn't wanna do that work. Yeah.
He doesn't wanna do more like writing forges, I mean, he does a lot as the select board assistant and the highway, is he separate?
I could have sworn we had it.
Let's see what we have in the highway department.
And.
Highway administrator, we only put in seven hundred dollars for that, so that's for all the work that he does for all those grants he puts together for V trans, that's probably not enough, but.
So like, maybe the place to start, Lily, is that you found all those kind of like inconsistencies, or maybe the edits that may be in that handbook that you, in the personnel policy that needs to be cleaned up, maybe that's the place.
I've got a, I've got a whole big file of various versions of the policy.
Yeah.
I've saved, but I don't think you wanna go there.
Yeah, I think as long as I have the most recent one, um, that's where I can, I can start. Um, but just wanna clarify, um, Robin's point?
Mm-hmm.
Is this something that needs to be posted or?
We're not making a new position.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not a new position, it's assistance to the, to the select board, so we've got money to help.
Okay.
For help.
Okay.
I mean, there are projects, you know, if I'm working on a project, I'm gonna do the work. But if there's something that.
Come double with your laptop.
Oh, okay.
Do you wanna come see it, can I pull her out of here?
Oh, of course, yeah.
Very cool, I'll start on the, uh, policy handbook, and I've got a couple ideas about some other things as well that I'll talk to you guys about next time. Okay, of course.
Alright, I'm gonna go through.
That's that roof thing?
Yeah.
You guys still gotta sign these, it took a quick.
Sign in, sign to tell, need to send more. Introduce your ID, password, can you find that?
Okay.
I, I got that thing here.
Okay.
Uh, one little bit. I have to put the Microsoft Authenticator app on. It may ask you to a phone. You gotta go in the Microsoft Authenticator app, but when I was ringing on your phone, the face I gave me.
Oh, okay.
I have no idea. That's your phone.
I mean, those are, those are pretty small jobs, I can't believe that somebody's gonna go, you know, another thing is the required site visit.
Which, what are we talking about?
The roof replacement.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Like people that don't, like you can't take off during the day to come look at a, you know, what might be a twenty thousand dollar job.
Right, right, yeah.
Oh, okay.
So, you were gonna go.
Okay, so that's, and I'll play with it at home, but that's all I need to do, can I do it from my phone too? This was the one.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Twenty-eight pages. Doesn't even talk about the, what kind of material we're gonna do.
This is, um, uh, this is that, I believe it's.
I think Joe Nielsen.
Not any better cam, or is it run this way?
Uh, no, wait, you had.
I can't read this.
That better?
Yeah.
Oh, um.
Uh, so I just go to, this is my browser?
Yeah.
Oh, wait, no, it looks like that you're doing.
Look, I can't read that, what, on to the.
Uh, woke up, the dogs fighting, and was bitten, both hands and fingers, a gun and a tie.
Yeah.
And then, uh, it, the animal was owned and it's owned by the woman who was bitten.
Okay.
But there's no, there's nothing here that indicates that.
If I'm going absolutely insane or not.
We're not in the town health.
This?
Just keep a completed copy of the form in the town's office.
Is directly contradictory of.
Yeah, so there's nothing to be done, I don't believe.
Action taken by health officer.
What this grant is.
No, it's, um, I was still.
You need to add this call?
Actually, I was.
Yeah, I'll give her a call.
Three, seven, three, six, eight, let me look that up, three, six.
This is the grant, the grant that you give us.
I guess I can't do that. So when we, uh, had the historic preservation person come to look at the town hall last year, the year before, when we had the ARPA money, they said we should have the same roofing as what is on there now.
Yeah, okay.
But in here, they're talking about shingles. Now, this building, this doesn't matter, but as far as the historical goes, it should be the same, even though it's not very way historical, but it should be the same.
Okay.
It's not like standing seam, I think.
Right, it should screw down metal.
Yeah, but that doesn't say that in here, it talks about shingles and stuff like that.
Okay, because I haven't gotten to that part yet, where's that, what page are you?
So it's way back, it's way in there, oh my god, this, uh, goes on and on.
I, when I created the RFP, I had to pull out all the shingle stuff to get it out.
Sure.
Um, but it's still, it doesn't really shorten this whole thing, you know.
Right, do, do.
But there's a lot of other stuff that doesn't have to be in there. For example, I mean, what would, what would hurt if people were working on the town hall roof and they used the bathroom for crying out loud? You know, as opposed to having to bring in a port-a-lip for every little job.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
I thought I remembered from your version that that just, we were just supposed to specify that, and that was, I don't know.
We could probably, you know, what's nice though, I think, is that Skip probably has this, it's formatted in a way that makes sense now, so we can edits to this, and hopefully it's not that big a deal for him to like edit some things out.
Well, he has some questions on here that I've been, right, I've been just like answering in pencil, my own answer, which maybe you know, like you guys should probably weigh in or whatever, but, um, I've just been kinda going through and like filling those boxes in.
Area, any areas of the building or grounds which have been, become stained or damaged in any way shall be repaired or replaced. I mean, does that happen with a roof, a patient, I don't know, restore and clean up.
Diana, I can't, I'm sorry, but I have a hard time focusing.
I don't know.
When you're reading out loud, I'm like extra bad, can't focus.
I can't use my, my red marker on this.
Okay.
But that's period all I have to do, especially since she's the owner of the dog, so. Presumably. She knows what she's getting into.
Did you leave a message?
I did, yeah, I left my phone number.
Do you need me for anything else?
I think you should go rest.
Thanks.
Or be, or be with your son, what was your plan?
To, I believe he's sleeping.
Oh, good.
I wanna talk to you about, um, tomorrow, about the zoning thing tomorrow night.
Okay, I'll only be here until ten tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
Cuz I have to go to the occupational therapy in Waterbury tomorrow.
Oh, my goodness, wow, okay, well, let me talk to you now if you want.
Robin, I guess there was only one other thing, and maybe Pam can find this for us, is the original, um, permit that was drawn up for the Walker property.
Okay.
Easy to get?
Yep.
Okay.
Come to find out, the Walker property, nevermind. Okay.
But Pam just showed me that the one was sent to him.
Yeah.
Got returned, but him and him are together, and he got his at this address. Okay?
Yeah. So I haven't, Joan hasn't called me back for a couple weeks, but considering it's from his family.
Okay.
But in case anybody shows up, I have to talk to Joan between now and then, I guess we just. But in case anybody shows up, I have to talk to Joan between now and then, I guess we just.
Well, something that I learned in that, um, BCA thing that I went to, is that you're supposed to do your site visits after you do the meeting. No, listen, you do your meeting, you schedule your site visit. That gives you that extra time for your fifteen days.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it's a, it's a, it's a, like, the reading.
Thank you.
That is who? Pages. The seventy-eight, eight, nine?
I mean, that's too bad, oh, don't listen to this, we have to babysit them, but we do, in order to have some, we don't have to babysit them. I sent a reminder to David and Britt Cannon and Michael Burn about the hearing tomorrow night, cause it's coming too late, but I didn't send you one. That's why I didn't send you one.
On my calendar.
So it's just page eight and nine, right?
Uh, conditional uses. Yeah, well, this, this part.
Yeah, I don't know if you wanna see this, that's.
A bunch of other, you have this one, signs, uh, other signs.
Just so that you can say you've seen it?
What is that?
That's the permit, that was originally.
Okay. I think I've already seen this somewhere, I don't know where. Okay.
It's for a pole barn.
Okay.
Man, I don't really know what the town's policy is.
So we've like, we've had issues like this before and there's like.
Nothing to do.
There's nothing we can do about it. Like, this isn't the only unpermitted structure in town, and people have complained about other ones since I've been on the board, but, like, nothing's come of it, it's just been a lot of talk and then it's kind of the end of it.
Can I make sure Skip that they ask all of those questions under the conditional use?
Did you wanna keep this, Chris? Give it back to Robin?
No, I called her and then maybe we'll shred it or something like that, but.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's like one of those things, like, we can talk about it, but there's really no evidence of doing anything about it.
How many are on the board?
Uh, there's five.
Five.
I don't know, they will fill up, they're far enough, but. No, well, we don't know. They do not wanna move out of it there, there's really no one who will, but they want a place with fewer stairs, kind of three stories. Does that board thing come in yet? I don't know, am I missing it?
Oh.
Keep hoping they don't go fall through. Cohen? Cindy Thompson? Nope, this is a double wide, a part of that, eight and nine.
Is Wibbry Town Hall on the?
Registration, the historical?
Yeah.
That's what I'm led to believe. I know Skip was questioning it in here, um, so I think it is, but I don't know for sure. Diana, do you know, Wibbry Town Hall? Sorry, I'm right in your way. Is it on the historic, uh, preservation website?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's on the federal historic.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's on the website also, if they wanna look it up. I guess I'll have to print one out myself because I can't read that little one.
One of these?
Yeah.
Yeah, um. I can.
But I'm really not involved, so I shouldn't. I shouldn't bother myself, you two can bother yourselves.
Did you ever do another front porch corner post out?
Nope.
No. I, um, I just know that, like, Kaki, when I originally talked to her at some point, and we were talking about the work on select work, and, you know, the need for some folks to do stuff, and she sounded like there would be some, like, interest in town among people. I'm not really sure how to connect with those folks.
The phone's about to run out of battery.
Of course it is.
Can't, I got it on the phone, I can't figure it out either, like, a useless.
Oh, okay.
All right, so.
So I'm here, so thank you.
Well, we have all these positions, right?
That's part of it.
Yeah, we're halfway there. Thank you. Are you gonna look into how to do it on this phone and then, um, I wish I could help you, but there's probably an app you need, right?
Right there, that's supposedly it.
Oh, okay.
When I go on there, I can't get, there's nowhere I can find a. No, I can't find out.
Fire warden.
Oh.
So I gotta find out how to do that.
Okay.
No, tree warden is important.
Thank you.
Yeah, but somebody might.
Somebody who knows about trees, you know, like, Ron used to be the fire warden.
Yeah.
Um, what's the name of, uh, Hillary, or Lampier used to be, I mean, not the fire warden, the tree warden.
Kevin.
Kevin used to be the tree warden, mm, the thing is, there's not a whole lot to do, but you need to know what you're doing.
Do you wanna do this another night, mine?
It's up to you.
I mean, I'm fine doing it, I just don't, if you're losing steam and you don't feel like doing it again.
I can definitely get it on your laptop, I don't know if I can get it on your phone, but I still need your phone.
Okay.
Are there passwords on them?
Yeah. God willing, it's gotta charge. It's good time.
Yeah.
It's good time, shut it down. Which means. Phone is eighty-nine percent.
Fourteen.
Oh, yeah, I think it worked, good shape.
Stop it. You can say it's only mine on the road. No, I have a blazer. That's what I wrote today, it was still warm, so I took that one, instead of making Stella's ending it a hot month. I'll see you tomorrow.
Bye, Robin.
Bye, Robin.
I knew what I was gonna ask the select board.
Doctor.
Yeah, remember to ask the select board.
No, all right. Yeah, thank you.
Do you remember me asking about signs for the town clerk, the assistant town clerk, and the treasurer, signs grabbing the parking lot?
I do remember that, yeah.
So is it still okay to go ahead with them?
I think so, that would probably be something that we have Alfie order, right? Yeah.
Okay.
Let me check with either board member, so I think that that makes sense.
I think so.
You remember?
I'm good with it, I honestly don't remember if I'm reaching Robin, sorry, but I'm, I think it makes sense. Have you guys had any more parking places?
Creep through with the dog bite, we're just trying to find out where that is.
You gave it back to me?
Oh, no, I gave it back to her, I don't have it. Yeah, and then, do we, did we ask Alfie to do a no parking, overnight parking sign?
I think we did.
I think we did, right?
No, we talked about it, I don't remember.
But with the car out there now, it seems like we should at least put, somebody should put a note on there, don't park here.
How long has it been there?
Uh, not long.
Not long.
No, he's there with us today when I went by.
Oh, okay, I don't know.
Thank you, I'm just looking for the number. Seven, three, six, eight, thank you.
Well, I mean, do we not want people, like, like, no people using the parking lot?
Right, I mean, I wouldn't, I think it'd be fine except in the winter when they need to plow.
No, it's not fine though, because he said, if he has to, you know, she asked him to grade, grade the parking lot a while ago, and he said he can't do any of that up, normal upkeep.
Yeah.
Cause there's cars here.
Somebody's here.
So it can't even be just no overnight parking, we have to have parking reserved for.
Office use only, or office?
No.
That kinda stinks, cause, right, like, it's a good place to leave vehicles to carpool.
Yeah.
Um, hmm. What if we have, like, designated, a couple designated okay to park spots, and I wonder if that would solve the problem, just, you know? So that most of the parking lot was still open?
Yeah, this is where we need a parking lot.
Yeah, yeah, can I hear you?
Properties.
Seven, three, six, eight, okay, I know where that is. This is the mobile home that used to belong to the Theroux's, the Alfie nows.
That way?
Yeah.
Okay, so it must be a tenant in this?
Yeah.
Okay.
So. Do you know how to make these changes yourself?
I miss?
Yeah.
No, I typically wouldn't, I would, uh.
I could just show you how it, I mean, you just have to download it and then reopen it in your Word processor.
It's, uh, cause he sent a Word document, it's not a PDF.
I don't think so, I don't.
Skip's got my computer, so I can't, uh.
Open and Google that.
He did say we need to pair this.
Yeah, it's a Word document.
Okay.
Once you download it. All these little red lines can be.
I don't think we need to have the mandatory pre-bid site inspection. What do you think, what's that?
I'd be okay with Nick seeing it.
No, cause you can see it all from the outside.
Yeah, they should see it, but they don't need to all see it at once.
Right.
Or everywhere over there, right?
Right.
They should, they should be aware that they have confirmed that they have seen it.
This is definitely gonna put a lot of work into this.
Which piece about just how long it is?
I mean, all of it.
Is this kinda, is this kinda standard, like, I've not, I don't bid, so I don't really look to the form, but.
Well, I think that this is, like, like, when they re-roofed the school.
Yeah.
Or when they painted the school.
Yeah.
Like, for sure, it was, but that's a huge contract, right?
Right, yeah.
That's probably a lead paint removal, that was a huge contract, so those folks who are, um, in, like, doing that size work.
Yeah.
Are prepared for something, I guess, but this, like, thirteen thousand dollar roof thing, I mean, who's, nobody I know that does.
Right.
Like, any of the roofs of that size is ever gonna, they've got plenty of work, maybe, it's gonna tie them in, you know, so.
So I've been, I've been looking to do it, and like, most of it, like, I do feel like most of it makes sense, I've been crafting out the things that don't.
It does, yeah.
So I don't know if it's necessary for us to, like, I mean, I wouldn't do it if I was repairing my house, but as far as, like, for the town's protection.
Yeah.
I don't know if we have to have all this stuff, but we're, it's like, I wouldn't bid on it, I'd be like, no way.
Yeah.
This is scary.
Right.
The conjurors show, erect barriers, tarpaulin doors, et cetera, may be necessary to protect the owner's operations. There, there's not gonna be hunger, I mean, okay, these people work during the day, but, uh, they don't need to be protected. And certainly at the town hall, they don't, there's nobody working there, so we don't have to protect the owner's operations while the work is in progress.
I did notice a piece about reaching out, and Chris, I wonder if we'd have any luck with this if we, like, reached out to some roofers that we know specifically and just mentioned it, and, like, I know this is kind of a daunting contract, but, like, I don't know. It, maybe it's important.
Kind of boilerplate.
Right, like, that we're not gonna be, like, over there trying to screw them over.
I, but even, I have mentioned it, but.
Yeah.
Aaron.
Yeah, he's probably busy and.
He's interested, but he's just not that interested.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
What do you?
Uh, it won't work on this.
It won't work on this?
I've gotta find that, I'm doing an Apple device.
Okay.
Cause I follow the same procedure I did for Lizzie, and it doesn't work there.
Okay. He what?
After the computers.
Yeah, yeah, I enjoy the club.
You ready for mine?
Yeah, we'll give you a try, see if I can screw that up. Where's your iPhone array, still have it?
You still have it. It's not an iPhone.
It's a track phone.
Yeah. It's a hundred dollar track phone that I bought from TV. But it came with fifteen hundred minutes of free airtime, which I never use, so, you know? Lasts forever.
Just keep it for safety.
Yeah, in case I need to call home and say what's for supper, like that. Because I can't call anybody from my house.
So like, just as an example, like, in one point, I don't mean to take you guys off what you're doing, but like, in one point six A.
Wait, what page?
Page two.
Oh, yeah. One point six. Two.
Uh, page two, one point six A. Two of fifteen, looks like that.
Okay, I have two, I have a different page two. This is my page two.
Attachment A. Oh, yeah, there, I have another two of four, three of four, four of four.
Right.
So once you get past initial.
Oh, so page two of fifteen, okay, I found it. One point six A, yep.
So when you look at that, right, I think it would be just enough to say the contractor should maintain adequate protection of his, her work from damage, and she'll protect the owner's and adjacent property from injury or loss arising from this contract. But you don't, but then, I don't think you need anything after that.
Yeah, I'd be good with that. Do we wanna keep B before starting any work, the contractor should protect all grounds, blah, 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 or do you feel like that's also covered? I mean, right, it is kinda all covered, yeah, yeah.
Or you could just say, don't leave a mess. Well, that would be too easy.
Yeah. Lawyers wouldn't, wouldn't think that was.
Right.
Materials will be raised, protective cover should be placed.
That's ridiculous. That's ridiculous.
From the base of the wall, it's ending up, no?
That's like putting plywood up the whole wall before handing up a sheet.
It's gonna be a really expensive project.
Yeah.
It is the building on grounds to be stained or damaged, and it should be repaired or replaced by the contractor. Like, what would happen?
I mean, I can only think if they didn't, if they didn't, well, I was thinking shingles, actually, it's metal. If they didn't tarp it and whatever's underneath the metal makes a giant mess, maybe there's shingles under there.
Yeah.
Um, but if it says they're gonna maintain adequate protection, then, and they're supposed to clean it up in the next section. Let's cross out D. We don't need it.
Yeah, I agree. I think the material storage thing and cleanup is a good one, though.
Uh huh.
Sorry, I know you were way ahead of me.
No, that's okay. You're being way more, like, I like your approach. You're chopping it way more than I was. That's good. I'll go back to my, where I was, but...
I think with, like, um, one point seven A, like, that first sentence, owners, and then maybe and.
And the second sentence?
Operations, right? And then you could get rid of the rest of it.
Yeah.
So if you said the contractor shall always keep the premises free from rubbish and shall arrange his or her material storage as to not interfere with the owner's and neighbor's operations, and then... Well, I guess it is important at the end, the job, all the enemies and rubbish should be removed from the site. And then, I think that's done.
Okay, so then what happens, like, this kind of gives, like, what has, what's gonna happen if they don't comply? But do we just want to leave that out, and just if they don't comply?
Well, usually I think that, uh, you know, there's a, they probably have to submit final invoicing, right?
Sure, so we just don't pay them?
Yeah, just doesn't get paid until the area's free of rubbish and...
Okay. Can we leave the ground shall be raked clean and the building shall be room cleaned? Well, maybe not the building room cleaned, but ground shall be raked clean.
They're not even working in the building.
I know. I crossed that part out. I don't know about the materials being delivered with the label intact. That seems like, kind of, I guess I can see the point on a huge job, but...
Yeah, I don't think that needs to be there for this one.
Inspection of work, seventy-two hours notice, like, that's not even a seventy-two hour job, probably.
Right.
Cross it out.
Where the specifications require any inspection and approval of any working products by the owner should present the contractor. We could just say, shall make arrangements?
Yeah.
Make arrangements.
To allow for scheduling.
No luck.
No luck here either?
Your phone didn't have Wi-Fi enabled. I tried to enable it, so I have to get on the internet, and it wouldn't enable. I think you have to be someplace where you have cell service to enable it.
You don't have cell service here?
No, you got Wi, you got Wi-Fi service.
Okay.
So.
Okay, alright, well, so what's next? We try it again when we're up at the school? Will they have Wi-Fi?
You know how cell service there either?
Do they have a cellphone there either?
We have to have a meeting at Hardwick.
No, it's, uh, you gonna be in your office anytime, uh? I can't do it. I'll try calling you, okay?
Yeah, when you have spare time.
I'm just wrapped up helping my neighbors do a couple things tomorrow, and then I'm done with that. So, alright.
Yeah, Thursday, we're gonna go to Lowe's and buy a refrigerator for camp, so that'll take all day, probably. And then...
We can do it next week.
Yeah, next week would be fine.
Alright.
Okay.
Alright.
They try and...
One out of three, well, actually, half of, half of one out of three. Cause I couldn't get it working on her cellphone. I got it working on the computer.
Thank you.
And so we would, they would, RB would charge if we stopped in there and had them do it.
I'm gonna talk to him about how we can get this easily enabled.
Yeah.
Okay, and see if he can instruct me over the phone. So, we'll see where that goes. If I have to take the computers down there, they're probably gonna drug us.
You might have to do it.
But I'm gonna ask him that question.
Yeah. I'm also happy to just, that, so that you don't have to do it, like, I can just stop in and pick my computer there and do it.
It's just, it's just not a matter of stopping in. You can have to leave it there and come back and pick it up. So, let me, let me see what I can find out, alright?
Yep.
Alright.
Bye, thank you.
Thank you, Skip.
They charged like forty-five dollars for fifteen minutes.
Chris, on the next page, three of fifteen, can we just get rid of C? I mean...
What does that mean? I'm not really sure.
I think it just means, like, if we said, oh, we want to inspect, like, the underlayment, and they already had the roof on, we could make them tear the roof back off. Or, I don't see us doing that. I feel like we could get rid of one point nine. I feel like we could get rid of A, but we should keep B.
God, that's a... That's a tough one. I mean...
Or, no, we probably should keep A, actually. I just reread it.
Where are you now?
Page three of fifteen.
Okay. What section?
Uh, one point nine A.
Good night.
Good night.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thanks, Skip.
Bye bye.
Actually, I feel like page three, we should keep everything but C.
I agree.
Okay. Except that down under D, number five, supervising the taking of test cuts. I don't even know what that means, but I don't think we're gonna do it.
So we get rid of five?
I would.
Who's gonna be the contractor's official representative?
I'd say it'd be me or Chris, would be my thought. Wait, the contractor's representative or the?
Well, oh, okay.
The owner's representative.
Some quick job site meetings with the contractor's official, yeah.
I think the contractor will be their own representative.
Right, no, but somebody, the authorized owner's representative shall be responsible for conducting job site meetings with the contractor. Important.
You wanna just get rid of the toilet, so these things, are you having?
Yeah, I, so I crossed that out. I also crossed out the one above it. And A and B, I kept the first parts and crossed out, cause they're talking about needing, like, to make special connections for, like, heavy equipment, which is not gonna be a thing. And then B, same thing.
It is a dense document.
They'll probably bring their own generators, right, for running their...
Highway? I mean, if we have power there, it's just gonna be like a compressor and some skill saws. I'm sure they can just, we must have some outdoor outlets there, or... Um, a generator would be really cumbersome and it would be really annoying to the neighbors, I'm sure.
Well, it's only one neighbor and...
I mean, I would, I would think it would make more sense for them to just plug in an extension cord to where, I don't know if we have outdoor boxes.
There is one here on the porch, and there's...
At the town hall, though?
I don't think so. They can always open the door.
The inside, yeah. Cause they'll need use of the bathroom anyway.
Yeah, they should just be able to use it. Water for concrete, mortar, washing and drinking purposes shall be furnished by the owners. I don't think there'll be any concrete or mortar, washing, or mortar. So is there any other things on here that we need to talk about, or can we adjourn and continue to look at this? I mean, we're not making any decisions on this.
Right.
Um, either way, I'd be okay with that.
Mostly for sure I'm sick.
Uh huh, yeah. Okay, I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.
Seven forty-five.
Seven forty-five.